Madam Chair, would you like me to start?
Yes, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Anna Ahmed. I am the Arizona Racing Commission Secretary. Today is October 28, 2024. This is a special Arizona Racing Commission meeting taking place via Google meets. I will call the room. French Contreras?
Here.
Vice Olsen is absent. Commissioner Coolidge?
Present.
Commissioner Zucker?
Here.
Thank you, we have a quorum. It is now 2:01 PM and the floor is yours, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Anna, and good afternoon, staff and commissioners, as well as everybody in the meeting. This is Monday, October 23rd. We're calling to order this special Arizona Racing Commission meeting for Monday, October 28th. Sorry about that. Dropping down to B, we have action item review discussion and possible action on conditionally approving a three-year commercial horse racing permit to Turf Paradise, conditioned upon an annual review of financials by the department, final receipt and disposition of the financial report, and a completion of the submitted repair list based on Turf Paradise's track and safety and grounds inspection report that has been updated. We do have those items. The commission received those items, as well as a racing surface testing laboratory report and summary. Is there any further updates or comments from the staff?
Chairwoman, this is Director Johnson.
Yes, Commissioner, yes, Director.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, and commissioners and stakeholders. I'll go ahead and start us off here, and then also Brian Duncan, our racing manager, will also speak to this matter. So we're here today to provide an update regarding the status of Turf Paradise and the race meet set to begin on Saturday, November 2nd. At the July 11th, 2024 Commission meeting, the Racing Commission conditionally approved a three-year permit for Turf Paradise, conditioned upon an annual review of financials by the department, financial or final receipt and disposition of the financial report, and completion of the submitted repair list. And just for ease of reference, for those that would want to go back in that July 11th meeting, that was at 1:29:47 and ended at 1:30:55 in the recording. So first, I'd like to discuss the department's review of the financials and the final financial report. As the commission may recall, the department has been working with an outside financial consultant, Mr. Tanner, to complete the financial report. At the July 11th, 2024 Commission meeting, the financial consultant provided his preliminary analysis on the financial viability of Turf Paradise. This report is currently in draft form as the department looks into the matters raised by Mr. Tanner. The due diligence will take some more time so that the financial report cannot be finalized yet at this time. The department does want to note that while we do not have a final report, in that July 11th Commission meeting, Mr. Tanner stated that for the race meet coming up in November, quote, "It does appear that the business will be able to carry out those races without a problem," end quote. And again, for anyone that wants to go back to that July 11th meeting, you can listen to those comments at 1950 to 1954. It is the department's belief that Turf Paradise can proceed with the race meet while the due diligence for the financial report is conducted. The department will provide updates to the commission on the financial report when they're available. So that covers the first two conditions in terms of financial report. Now to cover the last condition of the permit, which is the status of the track and grounds repairs. As I mentioned, our racing manager, Brian Duncan, is going to review the outstanding items that require work and repair by Turf Paradise, highlighting those areas that the department believes are necessary to be completed in order for the racing to begin on Saturday. So I will hand it over to Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Director. Good afternoon, members of the commission and stakeholders. My name is Brian Duncan, the Racing Enforcement Manager at the Arizona Department of Gaming. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the outstanding safety and repair items at Turf Paradise. As everyone prepares for the start of the racing season this weekend, our priority as an agency is ensuring a safe, compliant racing environment for the public and all racing participants, both human and equine. On June 24th, 2024, ADG sent a letter to Mr. Vince Francia identifying high priority repairs on the inspections, repairs, and remedies checklist that Turf Paradise needed to address in order to have a safe and compliant racing environment. Items on the list related to health, safety, and welfare of the track, facilities, surrounding grounds, and required equipment. The agency has been closely monitoring the progress of their repair commitments and have been conducting weekly inspections. In collaboration with the Horse Racing Integrity and Safety Authority, we have identified 15 critical items, some of which fall under the broader category of track inconsistencies. As of October 27th, 2024, that require immediate attention before racing can begin. Today, I will review critical line items identified in the June 2024 letter in detail, highlighting those that remain unfinished and are essential for a safe start to the season. What you what you will see on the screen are portions of the June 2024 2024 letter, including images of the items as of June 2024. These images and displayed portions of this letter will be part of the minutes. On the first one, we're going to go to item C, track inconsistency. Inconsistencies still exist in the following areas, and highlighted is the depth. Inner rail fluctuates, creating areas too low for horses and rider safety for the first five inner lanes. The surface is too deep, and the opposite is true on the outer lanes, creating fairness issues regarding the surface. The next highlighted area is going to be harrowing. Does not have a uniform grade and creates uneven banking pumps and ridges. In the red highlighted area, new additional harrows have been completed and are on the grounds. Only three harrows were being used for training as of 10/23/24. Some of the tractors are not able to pull the new harrows. Only two tractors and harrows were used on 10/24/24 during training. With the tractors Turf currently has, they cannot pull all four good harrows or run at the same speed, have different sized tires and different amount of tires, which creates unevenness across the track, which can lead to dangerous racing conditions. As you can see in the pictures here, some of them do have four tires on the rear. Some of them are skinnier, some are fatter, and some of them have two tires. Under the watering, which is highlighted, better water management and water trucks to be sought, I'm sorry, brought up to expectations are addressed by other means. Both inner and outer track lanes should be equally watered, including for the safety of chasing vehicles, ambulances, traveling in the outer lanes, as well as an, I'm sorry, even and fair racing surface. In the red, an additional 12,000 gallon tank was added. The water pump used to feed the tanks will shut off randomly. It does not keep the tanks full at all times. As of 10/25/24, a bid was accepted to install a new water pump. No date of installation yet. And then we go down to, under the burs, we're going to be talking about turf track. The clamps have not been fixed or installed, but more duct tape appeared to be added. Repair is necessary to function as intended as a safety rail. The next thing we have is the the RSTL recommendations. Racing surface testing laboratory recommendations should be followed before dirt or turf courses are used for racing. RSTL must approve the dirt, turf, and training tracks before use. The main turf and training tracks must be conditioned before testing. RSTL was present on 10/24/24, conducting testing, awaiting a copy of the recommendations and approval from RSTL. I did get, we did receive from RSTL an update. We received the report this afternoon, prior to this meeting. We have not yet had the opportunity to do a comprehensive internal review, but an initial review to confirm, appears to confirm ADG's finding of racetrack inconsistencies and equipment repair conditions. The next one is grading that we highlighted. Both the main track and training track will be required to be graded and be brought back into compliance with the specifications during the summer. Prior to the start of the meet, recommendations for the compliance include the following. We'll go down a little further where it says the availability of a rototiller should meet the demands of track management and comply with safety and efficiencies. The rototiller needs to be used. Horses are getting foot sore stepping on large solidified clumps, which also pose a safety hazard as flying debris can potentially hurt both jockeys and horses. In the pictures, you can see that the image, it only comes up, the recommended new standard is 48 to 50 inches per Heisa rules. It is showing a standard, the height of about 38 inches. And then in the first picture, you can see that there is a drop off on the inner rail of about 12 to 18 inches. In my visit yesterday, it did appear that they did do grading again, which did help it, but it did not specifically fix the problem entirely. We'll next go down to the jockey's quarters. The jockey's quarters must be thoroughly inspected, cleaned, and sanitized, including the sleeping quarters, restroom, sauna, kitchen, common areas, lockers, and valet stations. Heating and cooling system must be fully operational. Hot and cold water must be available at all times in the jockey's quarters. Additionally, the beds in the jockey's room, sleeping quarters, must be inspected and bedded with clean sheets, pillows, and blankets. In the red on 10/24, sleeping quarters have not been addressed. The sauna has mold under the benches. Light fixtures are not in place. Kids will not be operating and food will be cooked upstairs in the turf's club kitchen and brought down to the jockey's quarters. Cleaning of the jockey's quarters is incomplete. There is no hot water yet. As of 10/25, sauna benches are being torn out and replaced. Three leaks are being addressed. Sleeping quarters were cleaned and blankets and sheets were brought in, but not put on each bed. HVAC system needs to be tested to ensure it's functioning. ADG will continue to monitor, have Turf give updates until completion. Cleaning logs should be maintained. As depicted in the top left corner of the four pictures is one of the jockey sauna benches. And then in the right corner is also a second bench in the jockey sauna. And then also in the jockey's ceiling, there was a water leak in one of the ceilings. And then there also is one in the interior shower wall that is being repaired. We'll now go down to number nine, a fire inspection of the Turf Paradise facility, including the backside, should be scheduled and completed. Results should be shared with the department. No results have been shared yet with the department as of 10/25/24. The next item would be number 20. Inspect and ensure all backside and trackside lights are operational. Not enough lighting in the mornings during training. We need to add the repair lights. Item 21, inspect and ensure that the main track, turf track, training track, and human and horse ambulances are fully functional. One fully operational horse ambulance must be available at all times. There is one horse ambulance. There is a note that the horse ambulance truck broke down several times on the way to assist with a horse that needed to be banned off the track after an incident during the morning training on 10/22/24. On 10/24/25, the horse ambulance trucks stalled two times again. The horse trailer itself is in good condition. One human ambulance is in good condition and paramedics available since the first day of training on 10/9/10/24. And as you can see pictured in the is the red ambulance, the human ambulance. And then the other picture should show the horse ambulance as well. Again, trailer's in good condition. And we will next go down to item 36, which is the Health Department inspections of Turf Paradise for all food handling facilities should be arranged and completed, including the backside. Results should be shared with the department. It has not been received. Mr. Francia advised that they will ask for the documentation for all inspections performed. The next item is the list of suggested track equipment and materials for consideration. Andrew, if you'll go down a little bit. Thank you. Number one, the use of a fully functional rototiller. Rototiller needs to be used. Horses are getting foot sore, stepping on large solidified clumps, which also pose a safety hazard as flying debris potentially hurting both jockeys and horses. As you can see in the first picture, that is the non-working rototiller, needs major work, belts and blades. There is a picture of another one that could possibly be purchased. If we go to item four, says four tractors or however many needed, in excellent working condition. Some of the tractors are not able to pull the new green harrows. Only two tractors and harrows used on 10/24 during training. With the tractors Turf Paradise currently has, they cannot pull all four good harrows or run at the same speed. They have different sized tires and different amount of tires, which creates unevenness across the track, which can lead to dangerous racing conditions. There are some photos where there is a mechanic working on one of the tractors. There are pictures of two of the tractors that were not working at the time. If we go down to five, there is three water trucks in excellent working condition. At one point, there is a picture that there was two water trucks. One had a flat tire. We can see there are three trucks, water trucks, but only one is functioning properly. Again, ADG is monitoring the progress and will identify the areas in need of repair and/or remedy and will conduct follow-up inspections throughout the summer months. I do want to say thank you for allowing me to provide this update on these critical repairs that remain unfinished and are essential for a safe start to the season. We believe it is necessary to schedule a special meeting Friday after a final inspection on Thursday, where we will provide a final update on the conditions of the racing environment at Turf Paradise and their compliance with the regulatory and safety standards. Again, I appreciate everybody's patience and thank you for allowing me to speak on this.
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Thank you for that. I'm notorious for that. Before I pass on to the other commissioners and public, can you tell me, Mr. Duncan, how long has Turf Paradise had this list?
Yes, Chair. Chairwoman Contreras, June 24th, 2024 is when it was emailed and then a copy was hand-delivered the very next day to Turf Paradise.
So June, July, August, September. Okay. Is the permitting office open now, or is that still with HBPA's office?
Chairwoman, I'm unsure of the question.
That's okay.
Are you talking to the licensing office?
I'm sorry, the licensing office, yeah.
The licensing office we did occupy today.
Today?
Yes, ma'am.
It's the first day?
Yes.
Are there any representatives from Turf Paradise that wish to speak on this matter before we move forward?
Madam Chair, Vincent Francia for Turf Paradise.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. I think it would be helpful, from the point of clarity, if Mr. Duncan could go over the list, which just mentioned the it doesn't need to go over the thing he read, just what the area of concern is, I can answer the question.
So
I think, for the commission.
You're referring to the 15 critical items?
Let's begin there, yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Duncan?
Yes, Chair. One of the first items is the letter that was sent, item C, which is track inconsistencies. The depth and the inconsistency going across the track, being too soft on the inner rails and on the inner five rail and on the outside, it's a little firm.
Okay, let's start there. What Mr. Duncan has pointed out, we have been aware of for some time and taking corrections to get it right. Part of the correction process is, has to do with grading with our blade, which is a GPS system. The other part has to do with what Mr. Duncan brought up with the use of tractors. This morning, Mr. Sims made an agreement to bring in two more tractors and a cutting, or not a cutting harrow, excuse me, a rototiller. And so what that gives us is four tractors, which is, has always been the goal, across the track pulling four green harrows. Why is this so important? It's important so that as these vehicles and these harrows go over the dirt, that everything is uniform, not only from rail to rail, but in path to path, each tractor makes a path of its own, so that there isn't a difference. The rototiller is something I've listened to, two different schools of thoughts on this. One is that it's a positive, the other that it's not so positive. But what I do know that it's worth to try it out and see if the rototilling of the soil here at the track, which has its own challenges. And by that, I mean the composite not only is of sand, that we prefer, the sand, but it also has quite a bit of coliche and clay coming. It's no surprise, that's part of Arizona soil composition. And what the rototiller is to do is to make sure, and when it's placed at a certain depth, that it is basically minimizing the clumps. The rototiller is based on multiple discs going over the soil, and it crushes the soil, meaning the clumps, so that it's loose dirt instead of dirt that pumps up. There are a number of other things we do to the track to prevent this clumping. One is the addition of number 10 mesh sand. The other is the, we're getting ready gypsum, whose primary purpose is to do just that, to break up clumps. So short of it is, there's two additional tractors that have just arrived in the maintenance yard along with the rototiller. And we are going to get them on the track and test them out, but they were purchased, leased by Mr. Sims, and we got it done today, and it's for the purpose of what has been described, so that everything can be uniform from rail to rail. Your, Mr. Duncan's second point that he brought up, that I might address more directly?
Mr. Francia, going back to number one, we've got horses running on those tracks right now, trying to get ready. And why has it taken so long for this to be addressed? I mean, you're wanting to open on Saturday. There's horses running on that track right now. And that concerns me, that they're even having to run on these surfaces. What's been the holdup?
Madam Chair, to get ready for the race meet, I wouldn't suggest or jump to a conclusion that may not be correct, that because they are training on it and what Mr. Duncan has brought up is a matter of concern, that they're on a dangerous surface. I'm trackside every morning with the trainers, with the exercise riders and jockeys, which is important, to find out how the track is on any particular morning. So if something is off, I know it instantly. It can take correction in the afternoon. I don't want to give the commission or the Director of Gaming a misimpression that any of the horses are running on a dangerous surface. On a surface that we seek to improve and make better, yes, that's what we are all trying to do. These things happen on tracks that have far more far more equipment at their disposal than we do, but never would we let a horse go on to the main or the training track if it was in any way dangerous. Can we make it better? Yes, and that's what we are trying to do with the leasing of additional tractors, two tractors and a rototiller.
Thank you, sir. I hear what you're saying. Mr. Duncan, can you provide Mr. Francia with item two of your concerns, so he can address that?
Just give me the lead in, Brian. I can take it from there.
Okay, the harrowing was next, but I believe he covered that with the last one. So I will go to the watering, which is the addition of the 12,000 gallon water tank and the water pump not working.
Thank you for that. The water, the new water pump, excuse me, has been purchased, and what we are doing now is planning, what is the best day in which to install it? Yes, we have additional water storage. We put in an additional tank. But recently, the pump has been acting in a way that it has not acted before. It runs and then it clicks off and then it runs and we'll go back and forth on this, and then it's, for a couple of days, it's absolutely fine. Well, we can't function under Well, we can't function under not knowing what the water pump is going to do from one day to the other. So we have three different firms out. All of them deal with water. And the one that made the most sense was the firm that we hired and purchased the pump from. And what the gentleman told us, he said, the pump works. It's not that it doesn't work. He said, but it's, you installed this in 2007. Well, as soon as that was brought to my attention, that, I get it. It's still working, but it's not working as it did in 2007. I can equate that to my own age. I don't work the same way I did when I was in my 40s. So we moved quickly to interview the different pump companies in the area to address this. And we settled on one that is going to put the pump in sometime this week. And by sometime this week, I mean we find the window to install the pump so that it doesn't interfere with training and certainly racing. So what I am hoping for, Friday, the track goes dark. That is, there's no training on Friday. It's going to take four to five hours to install the new pump. And we need, since we're not training and we're not racing, that we can use that time in case something goes amiss. Not everything goes according to plan, to make the adjustments and get the pump in. So Friday is the target date to put in the new pump.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes, the next item would be the turf track rails. The clamps have not been fixed. More duct tape repair as necessary to function as intended safety rail.
Right. The, I think it was two race meets ago, I was out on the turf track with Darryl Hare, the head of the guild for this region. And there, on the inner turf rail, there were clamps and they were on it for years, I mean, over 10 years. But Mr. Hare felt that the clamps posed a possible threat to riders where if a rider got his boot caught in this clamp, that it could have an effect that would really become prejudicial to the rider and the horse. So he didn't want the clamps anymore. What was agreed upon is duct tape or gorilla, white gorilla tape that the jumpers, it's what holds the pipes together as they, as they come together. Instead of doing it with clamps, we do it with duct tape. There, when Mr. Hare was here recently, there were a couple areas he noted that had become worn. We marked them. We addressed them. We corrected them. But the duct tape is what we've been using and it holds so far.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan? Mr. Francia, let me just clarify that you realize now that duct tape isn't sufficient, right? That they want better repairs on that, on the burrs coming up, either standard off or...
They're two different things, madam. The burrs come up on the main track, not on the turf. The main track, the inner rail is composed of, some of it is fontana rail and some of it is sheets of metal, which we ordered a couple of seasons ago that come from Los Angeles that are designed to fit into the eight-foot sections between each post on the main track. Well, yeah, sometimes the fontana rail and these steel plates don't hit flush. And it's something we look at daily. They stick up. And we don't want them to stick up because that could pose a danger in and of itself. So that's something we do daily to make sure that there's nothing sticking up, that everything is as flat as possible out there on the main track. The turf rail, the inner turf rail is much different. It's a steel pipe and there are no flat panels. It's just a pipe that goes around the turf course on the inside.
All right. Mr. Duncan, do you want to address the next concern?
Okay, the next concern was basically the RSPL recommendations. Since we have not yet had an opportunity to do a comprehensive review internally, I'll let Vince discuss that a few issues.
Thank you, Brian. I just received them in the email about an hour ago. I haven't even had time to look at the summary. So I don't know what their conclusions are. But as soon as we conclude this meeting, that is what I'm going to be doing to see what conclusions the gentleman has made.
Fair enough. Any other concerns before I ask the public for their comment?
Madam Chair, there are a few others if you'd like me to go over those as well.
Yes, sir. Let's go over, give Mr. Francia every opportunity to give us an idea of what's happening.
All right, there is, the next one was the grading, both the main track and the training track along with the GPS slope control.
Okay.
The two different surfaces, although the one thing they have in common is they're both dirt, the main track and the training track. And both have to be just right, meaning they have to be safe. That which we've done or are doing in terms of getting the grading properly, the horses will train on it six days out of the week and then one day they're off of it. And that's the day where you are regrading the track. And that starts with a very simple premise that we know that dirt does. It will go downhill. So the more training that you have on it, the more the horses are on it, the more that dirt is going to shift from the outside to the inside. And that's where the grading comes in because you don't want that dirt to be building up on the inside. That's what causes an inequality of depth in a racetrack where you have an inside that's steep and then the middle of the track, which is so-so, and then the outside, which is hard. So we grade it once, once a week. The track superintendent feels that should now be done twice a week. I'm all for that. And what that is, the whole goal is to make sure that from rail to rail, that it is even, that even by eyesight, when I look at it, I can see that everything is even from the inner to the outer rail or vice versa. So the training track, it was brought to my attention. We just opened that, started to open that up. That has ripped the soil and stuff, so it's not ready for horses to go on it. The track superintendent was going to get to it this afternoon. It's got to be ripped up, dug down, graded and leveled out. And it's been given a 1% bank at the request of HISA. Generally, you don't bank training tracks, but we are complying with what it is they want. And we feel that by next week, the training track will be ready to accept horses. And it's about, it's about time because we're over 1,000 horses on the ground right now. And I notice when I'm out at the main track for morning workouts, there are periods where it's getting really quite congested. And that we want to avoid. The ideal is, the main track is for horses that need to perform serious workouts to get ready for a race or be gate trained, or they're doing a more serious gallop. The training track, on the other hand, is for horses that just need very light exercise. It's not a track for them to go racing around on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Duncan?
Yes, Madam Chair. The next one was the availability of the rotor tiller, which I believe you've already covered. So I will go to the next one, which is the jockey's quarters.
Yes.
And the sauna area. The beds and all the rooms that are in the jockey's quarters.
Yeah. Of the five rooms that were of concern to the department, the jockey's room was the most challenging. There was the racing office, which, and again, before we did anything, the environmental companies went in to say, well, you have this problem or that problem or something is really wrong. So we started off with the racing office, where we, now I'm talking about offices where repairs had to be made. And that was the first of two. The front of the racing office, the sheet rock had to be taken out and everything cleaned and disinfected and cleaned again and then put back together. The test office, where they test the horses after the race, that required cleaning and disinfecting. There's also a number of things we do on an annual basis with the test barn to make sure that it's ready because it also serves the test barn as a locale where horses which are claimed are coming into the back. They're not going into the test barn, but they're in an area right by the test barn. So that needs to be made ready. The paddock office was quite the challenge. I did forward a photograph to Director Johnson after it's been done. It's been quite a change. What we experienced there was we were having some water entry and we couldn't quite figure out why that was. And then it dawned on us as we looked. The one area had been perforated by rainwater over the years. The second area, the eastern wall of the paddock office adjoined the washing room where the jockeys wash off their boots or the jockey wash off their boots and things like that. Then it had become prejudiced. The water over the years seeped under. So all of that was ripped out, disinfected, cleaned, sealed up. And the paddock office was given a brand-new look, not only the wall, but the ceiling and the floor. But the stewart's stand had a challenge all to itself. And that has to do with the habits of pigeons, in this case, over 1,000 are in colony at Turf Paradise, but we figured out a way to make it safe for the stewart's to be up there and also to protect them from the natural proclivities of pigeons. I'm currently researching with a number of different firms to see if we can't get this addressed, excuse me, about the amount of pigeons which have gathered here over the years. There's a number of different ways to go about this, but what is more important is that the stewart's stand is safe for them to be in it. Then the jockey's room was the most challenging because the environmental companies identified three areas where there were water leaks. And that in itself wasn't the challenge. It's after we got into them, excuse me, we found other problems. Let me start with the jockey sauna. That had become prejudiced by the fact that it's natural that jockeys pour water on the the sauna apparatus that's in there. But it's actually not designed for water. That is, it's not a steam room. It's a sauna room. But in turn, that water was prejudicing the wood in which the jockeys sit, the actual benches. So, excuse me. So what we did is we've taken the old wood sauna bench out. We totally disinfected the entire room and we've put in a new sauna for the riders. We also took it an extra step in that we're using a new product on the market where it's designed for saunas that when you sit on it, you don't have to worry about catching a splinter. It's a smooth surface. It's designed to repel water. But also in the process between the sauna and the shower, the environmental people had detected two leaks, which we went in to repair. But in doing so, we found other leaks and they had to be confronted and repaired. So it took a little bit longer time. However, everything in regards to the jockey's room will be completed by Wednesday. Brian, what is your next topic, please?
Yes, sir. The number nine, a fire inspection. No results have been sorted with the department as of 10/25/24.
Okay, I have received none myself. Let me check with Sal, one of our staff members. He handles the fire inspection. It may have already been conducted and he just didn't give me the paperwork. I'll find out.
Yes, sir. Next item would be number 20. Inspect and ensure that all backside and trackside lights are operational.
Two were brought to my attention last week and they were fixed. I have not heard any, I generally get phone calls from trainers about that. And I assume we're talking about the lighting, which is around the race, the backside of the racing track, of the main racetrack that we have. We start training at 6:00 in the morning. And we're just getting faint early morning light at that time. I mean, horses can train okay, but we're quickly arriving at the time where we're going to have to move from 6:00 to 6:30. Otherwise, they're going to be in darkness. But if there is a problem that the department knows of, a light is out. Please bring it to my attention and we'll take care of it right away.
Okay, the next one would be item 21. Inspecting to ensure that the main track, training track, and human and horse ambulance, ambulances are fully functional. It's basically the horse ambulance where it has stalled a few times on the track. I know the trailer's in good condition, but it is the truck that pulls it.
Yeah, you're correct, Brian. This past week, the truck which pulls the horse ambulance did something that it's never done before, and that is it stalled. And so I don't want to say one piece of equipment is more important than the other, but the tractor or the truck that pulls the horse ambulance ranks up there among the most important. So we had our mechanic go over it. He did some repairs on it. And what we do do, because the, believe it or not, the horse ambulance trailer is seldom used. That's the good news. I wish it would never had to be used. And so what the track crew does every day, they will start the truck and so that it gets some sort of operation and let it run for 20 minutes. But it has been through our mechanic and it's back up and running like it should be. If it continues to exhibit any sort of problems, then we'll take a different corrective action. Brian?
All right, the next item is number 36, which is the Health Department inspections at Turf Paradise for all food handling facilities.
Okay, the inspector, the Maricopa County Health Inspector, Trish is her name. She had a family emergency, her mother in the Midwest. But what she has done is she's spent quite a bit of time out here with our new kitchen people that we have hired, has given them a temporary go-ahead until she gets back and gives them a final, in other words, the actual certificate. So we're okay to operate under her guidance. I don't think she'll be, I don't know she'll be back before the race meet starts, but sometime in that area. She has been out here quite a bit. She knows Turf Paradise quite well. And we follow her instructions to a T.
Okay, Vince, the next item would have been under the suggested track equipment. One was rotor tiller and then four tractors, which I believe you've addressed. The last item would be the three water trucks in excellent working condition. Again, I know there was times where there was only one water truck and two water trucks. That would be the other one.
Okay, and let's deal with the water trucks. They have been a challenge for us. We keep after them, of course, because of the importance of water on the racetrack. And the one we have under And, uh, the, the one we have under serious repair right now. Uh, Mr. Sims is aware of this and I keep him advised. Uh, but they run fine. They provide the water that's fine, but they're, they're just not uh, functioning at, uh, a, a level that uh, we're, we're confident we're constantly have our eye on them. Um, but we, we, we keep them running. There's no, there's not a situation where the racing surface is not getting water. That's, it's not that at all. But, uh, it's, it's something we're monitoring and it may be that, um, a- as we continue with our monitoring and repair of the water truck, that we have to go down another path and that is, uh, perhaps even, uh, rent some, even though water trucks are hard to come by in the state right now because the amount of building that's going on. Secondly, uh, street water trucks are not designed like track water trucks. They don't have the arm which extends out. So i- if we were forced to go down the, uh, road of, uh, renting or leasing a water truck, it would have to be with the understanding that we could add an arm to it. Uh, because that's what, uh, racetracks require.
Thank you, Commissioner, um, uh, Chairwoman. That is the last one that was on the list.
Thank you, um, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Francia, can you tell me the status of getting hot water to the test barn? Cause that's concerning to me.
Uh, hot water to the test barn?
Yeah.
Um, uh, I will check on that right after this meeting concludes. I did get a, uh, email from, uh, Claudia Alvarez about hot water in the, uh, A Door office, uh, which I will have addressed, but I will check on the, uh, test barn as well.
All right. I do have feedback here that there's no hot water there and we, that's imperative too, that they have.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry? At the test barn?
Right there. Okay, the test barn. Okay.
Yeah, the test barn. Um, Mr. Yothar, you raised your hand. I am going to take public comment. Um, Mr. Francie, are you done at this time?
Uh, unless the commission has other questions, thank you for allowing me to, uh, address Mr. Duncan's, uh, uh, concerns on his list. You're, uh, getting, uh, you know, input from us and how we are addressing the problems that he brought up in his presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Yothar, go ahead, uh, with your comment before we move forward.
Madam Chair and Commissioners Lloyd Yothar, I'm the President of the Horsemen's Organization at Turf Paradise. And, uh, I would like to commend Turf Paradise, uh, for their current effort in this new meet and our new contract for three years. However, um, it's, uh, I, I, I'm just a bit concerned about the racetrack primarily. The other issues are very, very, very important, but the racetrack is the main issue for the safety of the horse and for the jockeys. That's first and foremost in my mind. And I do realize that, uh, that Turf Paradise Management has decided to rent two tractors, but it really takes four tractors that can pull four new heavier, um, harrows around the track without delaying races in between races. And the fact that we're, uh, always last minute. I mean, we're racing Saturday and we're talking about getting water fixed with the racetrack by Friday. I mean, a lot of this is, I mean, I understand, but it, it's, it's just unfathomable to me how we can wait, 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 and wait. Uh, uh, to get, to do half measures. I mean, we never seem to fix a problem. We just do half measures on everything we do. And I don't mean to be negative. I want to be positive. But it's to the point, uh, that I, I'm, I'm getting very, very discouraged with racing in general and with, uh, the, the way things are, are, are taking place. I mean, we, we know what's required. We know what's needed, but it doesn't seem that we can get the job done. We just wind up doing half measures for whatever reason. And, uh, with that, I'll answer any questions you might have, but uh, that's just my concerns and feelings and, um, it's very tragic that, uh, we've had some breakdowns already because of not having the right equipment, not having enough equipment, not having enough water, not having the right tractors, not having a, a tiller. Uh, but I understand that Mr. Sims has gone, uh, come up and stepped up and has bought a tiller and is getting two tractors. My concern, my concern is, is two tractors going to be enough? Because he says he has four. Well, we've had four and we've got three or four water trucks, but they don't seem to be two working at a time. So that's just one of the things that I wanted to put out there and and with that, I'll take any questions you might have or from, uh, Mr. Francia or Mr. Sims if they're on the line. Thank you.
Mr. Francia, could you get four harrows running in a time for these races?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Yes, uh, as I say, the two additional tractors just arrived in the maintenance area today. I, I, I want to caution on one thing. Uh, and this was after, uh, long conversations with Mr. Gilfoyle from HISA. HISA's concern is focused on one thing, and that is safety on the racetrack. Um, my concern is that we do not jump to conclusions. No matter how tragic when a horse breaks down on the racetrack, that it's immediately the fault of the racing surface. Um, that will lead us all to incorrect conclusions about the things that need to be done. There absolutely is no argument from turf management that we everything and anything, whatever is required to keep the racing surface as safe as, um, is possible. But don't jump to the conclusion that every time a horse breaks down is because it's the racing surface. That, that is not going to lead us to, uh, the correct truth in these matters. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. And, and your point is taken. I don't think that was Mr. Yothar's point of just his experience and and years with racing horses. It's, it's a good point. Four harrows running at a time is going to make for a more even surface. Um, uh, Commissioner Zucker, you raised your hand?
Yes, uh, I may have missed it, but, uh, in the discussion, uh, with Mr. Duncan, uh, asking about permits from, uh, the Health Department, how about the Fire Department? Have they already granted approval to the track?
Oh, Commissioner Zucker, they, they may have. I'll, I'll check with the staff person that handles that for me. Uh, they generally come in, uh, uh, twice a year, once to inspect the interior of the building for a proper uh, fire extinguishers. And secondly, the, uh, the stable area. I'll, I'll, I'll find out. I don't know. I, I can get advised by that person that they've been here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
This is Jerry Sims. May I address the commission?
I'm sorry?
Uh, this is Jerry Sims. May I address the commission?
Yes, sir. Give me just a moment. Mr. Yothar, you raised your hand. I'm going to give you another minute.
Okay, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, uh, it's not the fact that I'm jumping to conclusions. I'm just raising concerns that I have. And each track, no matter where they are, if they're even in the same state, they're different compositions. And they keep, uh, uh, management keeps referring to what they get from California or from, uh, Kentucky or wherever. They're different compositions. You have to work with what you've got. And they need to know the composition and they need to know dirt and, 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 uh, right conditions to make it, make it work. I'm not jumping to conclusions. I'm just saying that there's, there's, there's facts, uh, uh, I understand there's other issues that horses break down, but I'm not jumping to any conclusion. I'm not pointing any fingers other than the fact that if we could just get it right, then we'd have more of a secure feeling about sending our horses out and our riders out uh, under safe conditions. And that's, that, it's just some concerns that I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Point taken. Mr. Hayes, you raised your hand?
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner. Um, I just had a, uh, question overall. Is, is there, is there going to be any upgrades or changes to the grandstand itself? I know, I know that's probably not a priority at this point because the racing service and the other items that we discussed are priority, but you know, to the, uh, you know, as far as the bathrooms or, or anything in the grandstand itself, because you know, I envision a lot of people showing up on November second, opening day. And I just want to be assured that, that the grandstand is safe and that, um, you know, the possibly the areas that needed upgrades and concerns will be addressed. Thank you.
Mr. Francia? Do you want to address that?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, in the grandstand, um, changes have been made both to the women's and the, uh, the men's restroom. Um, uh, everything is, uh, what we're trying to do is, um, uh, one of the biggest changes that's going to take place in the grandstand is food is going to be offered, uh, that we have not had. Uh, that's part, it's not only going to be offered in the clubhouse, but in the, in the grandstand. And, um, a- as far as a big crowd on opening day, that's always welcome. It's a good way for us to start. Uh, but we want it to be so that when it comes time to leave after the last race, our patrons have a good experience uh, of it. But right now our focus is, uh, um, on, on the improvements we did in the grandstand, which do include restrooms and those in the clubhouse. And the biggest improvement of all is bringing this food and beverage company in to uh, be able to offer our patrons really quality and different food.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sims?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, you know, I, I'd like to commend, uh, Mr. Francia for what he's done over the summer. It, it sounds some of it like last minute, but they've been working since our last meet ended. And as you might recall, there were a hundred and fifty projects that were on there. And the ones we have left are very, very important. And that is why I said get the new tractors, lease those two new tractors. And if we need more, um, Mr. Yothar, I will make sure we have them. Uh, so don't be concerned about that. If there's any issue, we'll get more. And, uh, you know, during the summer, we had, we had two, um, um, of those, uh, white harrows and two of the green ones, and they didn't match. And so we, we built two more, um, so they'd all be uniform. And, uh, you know, the priority on the track and safety is just at the top of the list. And so, uh, I will tell you that if we need anything, whether it's a water truck or more tractors or whatever it is, I will commit just as I just okayed the things they just got. And when it was a question about the pump, I, I mean, uh, Mr. Francia talked and said, just put a new one in and, uh, and solve the problem. So, uh, that's the attitude that we have as far as what needs to be done. We, we're going to do. We've been doing it. We're going to continue. So thank you for giving me the time.
Mr. Francia, we're, we're really running tight on time and it, it, it's really gives me heartburn for these families of jockeys and stuff to not know if they've got a race starting Saturday or not because we haven't approved this with all these changes and, and repairs. Are you telling me you're going to be ready to run Saturday?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am. Um, as I said the other day, when you were President along with Director Johnson, I, I am going to, I would never, ever do anything to, uh, uh, embarrass the commission or the Director of Gaming. Yes. Uh, we will be ready. And if that were not the case, uh, I would, uh, uh, tell the commission that we, we cannot be ready because of X. I, 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 I won't do that. Ye- yes, we all want to get a race meet started, um, not just because it's for Paradise, not just because it's management's wish, but, uh, for everyone on my staff and, um, and for Mr. Sims. There are hundreds and hundreds of men and women who are depending on us. Their families depend on us to make this race meet happen. But I am not, under any circumstances, going to tell the commission that, uh, something is okay when it is not.
Do I have any comments in the public? Could you raise, use your raise in the future? Yes, Commissioner Coolidge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to commend the department, uh, as far as diligence and background, not only that they've done, but also provided to the commission today. The, uh, grave concern that I have is that we're having a commission meeting to talk about pushing something out four days only to talk about it again. So, uh, wondering if we are indeed doing another or, or planning on having another special specifically to talk about this?
You know, I share your concern. I know that that is something that the division staff has discussed, um, and is they've asked us if we have availability. I have problems with that as well because I think we're so far or so close now that to put it off to Friday concerns me even more. And I'm open to having a public discussion about that. Um, if you have any thoughts or any more input on that, before I move on to other sta- uh, staff or, or public members.
The, the only thought that I have is that there's no point in us doing a a continuation if we're only going to be meeting about this again on Friday.
Okay. Mr. Nolan, you raised your hand?
Uh, yes. Uh, yes, Chair. Uh, I'd like to just point out, um, the concern that Commissioner Coolidge is stating that with racing on Saturday or scheduled because entries have been taken, there are seventy-eight horses in the body of the races Saturday. These horses need to medicate forty-eight, seventy-two hours out. The uncertainty, the delay game has put these horsemen at a major burden. And it should not be acceptable. Um, that we have the biggest weekend of racing for simulcasting this weekend that they do not want to jeopardize. Th- this date has come and gone and it was a special meeting. Uh, they are caught in a delay game and it's the burden on the horsemen. This is a very double edged sword. I want horse racing for the people. The horses need it. But the delay game is biting them right in the behind. And please understand that these horses need to medicate twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours out. It's a requirement. If this happens Friday and then there is a no, there's several thousands, tens of thousands in medication bills. Please just understand the the, the people too. The horsemen. We need the horses safe, the people safe, but that includes the livelihoods and the money spent. And that's not being dealt with. And this was the time period. The time has come and gone. And there's sixteen majors, majors. Now, all of a sudden, they got everything and there, there's no certainty, even though Mr. Francia comes with certainty that these will be done. Too late. It, today was the certainty for these poor people. Now, take action. Let us move forward. We need to see a little bit forward here. I see, I see it. But it's after the fact.
All right, Mr. Nolan, let me ask.
Taken to consider the livelihoods, the money spent, and it's the burden that this permittee has put upon a whole industry.
I, I hear you, Mr. Nolan.
I'm frustrated. I'm out there with these people. The, the barn area, the aesthetics. How can I say that years and years of neglect can't just be dealt with overnight?
I hear, I hear you, sir.
But there are concerns that you just need to also address.
So let me ask you. Let me, let's have a discussion. Let's have a discussion here. So you're suggesting that we move on with the racing as scheduled pending the necessary repairs, correct? Because you, we either get the repairs done or we don't. I know that you're always concerned about the condition of this track. But I also hear that rightfully so, we've got horses ready to go and they're going to need to be medicated. So you're saying that you would agree that running on Saturday would be the best bet for the, for this track right now? Mr. Nolan?
I don't believe that that should be. I don't believe that. That should be left up to me. There's an agency that has those requirements. Please just do the right thing because it's the right thing to do.
What is the right thing for you?
You got acknowledgement and it's the delay game. Someone's responsible if these horsemen don't get to run. I thought that's what this meeting, you've taken entries. We're going to take entries again tomorrow with so much uncertainty. There's no one's fault but the permittee's negligence for 20 years. And this is a very double-edged sword. It's not up to me. I think the regulators are speaking and it's unfortunate if there is a delay, but the delay might be necessary to bring accountability and awareness.
Okay.
I don't want to be responsible. There are people paid for those positions. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Do I have any other public comment? Anybody want to raise their hand? Mr. Gessman?
Yes, I had a question maybe for Mr. Francia. It's been brought to our attention that the two new tractors.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is Jean Galvin, the Board's Independent Advisor. Mr. Gessman, I can't hear you. Is it just me?
No, I can't hear him either.
And so for the record, we need to make sure your audio is available.
How about now?
There we go, Mr. Gessman. Thank you.
Okay, this is Leroy Gessman, Executive Director with the Arizona HBPA, Chairwoman and Commissioners and Staff. It was just brought to my attention, these two new tractors, which is a great addition to the equipment here at Turf Paradise. However, it's been brought to my attention that they are tractors that have tracks on them like a caterpillar, not tires, wheels and tires. The concern that I have is we need all four to be the same. If we're going to have four with tracks, we need four with tracks. We're going to have, we can't have two with tracks and two with tires. And I just was wanting to bring that to the attention of the Commission.
So, Mr. Gessman, what you're saying is they could only run two of them? Correct?
Well, I'm just saying to keep the consistency on the racetrack, we need all four tractors the same.
Mr. Francia, any thoughts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if that's going to be the case, but I understand where Mr. Gessman is coming from. I assume Mr. Sims is still on the line. We will know when the four tractors get out there because that's what we will try first, is there going to be such a difference? Because the two new ones that have a tread over tires where the other ones have no tread. It's just, and I'm sure Mr. Sims will make the adjustment quickly if this is the case. What I'm saying is the goal is, in order for something to be uniform, you have to do it in a way, whatever it is you're doing, in this case grading racetrack, that everything be uniform to carry out the assignment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Darrell Hare, you raised your hand.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. Darrell Hare, Western Regional Manager of the Jockeys Guild. I just want to address or talk to Vincent Francia concerning the jock's room. It makes me feel good that it's sanitized and the sauna is taken care of. But I have concerns with the water leaks with the building being so old and what happened while I was there, because I was there Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, and I walked the entire plant and I saw what has been done and what needed to be done, just like what Brian explained, and it was all documented for a long time. But is there a backup? My question to Vincent is if those pipes break, like the one that broke between the shower and the urinals the other day? Old pipe? Is there going to be, there's so many leaks. Are we going to have something, a backup, a trailer for the riders if something goes where they can't shower or have water? So that's one of my concerns, what's going on in that jock's room, all the leaks in the ceiling. Concerning the rails, I walked it and I saw different areas where the rails were too low. I know that's going to be addressed because they're way too low, dangerously low. So I'm glad to hear that would be taken care of because there's four different areas all around there. Also, where with the, with the, the equipment, we walked the racetrack and because of the trailer, the machinery being so old, the tractors, there was, it was uneven. And riders told me, I don't know who Vincent was talking to, but they're stained in tatts like where the water truck tires are because it was so uneven between the tractors, not being able to pull the harrows. And I don't know where these harrows are coming from. Are they going to, are they being rebuilt? Because there was green, too green and too white. Now we're being told it's going to be four green. Are they rented? Because that's so important to have consistency with those harrows along with those tractors that work. So I'm hoping that gets in order in that that machine to break up the clods. Those clods are already like bricks when we are, you know, it's just, that's a necessity, I would think. So a rider doesn't get his, you know, head taken off. They come back that hard. And one other thing that I want to address with the duct tape on the rails. Now, we all know the last couple of years, they've been getting panels for the Fontana because it's been out there a long time with that sun cooking it. So the Fontana rail didn't look too bad. There were some panels that still needed to be needed to be fixed. They were sticking up and protruding. And the inside rail with the duct tape, that rail is so old and it's all metal. And why the duct tape was put on last year was to kind of cushion or make it flush. So if a rider hit the rail, he wouldn't take his foot off because it was all metal. It was like a string of metal, old metal that was connecting the rails. So they tied it to just make it flush. But now it's all so that the duct tape is in the middle of some of the rails, holding it together more or less. And it's very fragile. And it concerns me because they're so old. And I saw four or five of them along the way that the duct tape was hole in the middle. And it's just an accident waiting to happen. I mean, it's really that where they need new rails. So, but, you know, I know the riders are fearless and they go out there and they toughen it up because that's what they've had to do. Because it's just ongoing, these repairs, they have to be as we go along. It's just things keep going wrong because everything's old. And I just hope that all these things are addressed. It's just.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
We hear you. Director Johnson, this may be out of left field, but do you have any thoughts or opinion whether or not the finance report for Turf Paradise will be available in, say, 45 days?
Chairwoman, thank you for the question. I'm not able to kind of pinpoint exactly when at this point. You know, we can provide updates as we get further along in our due diligence. But 45 days, I just, I don't know if that's going to be the amount of time or not.
Fair enough. Yeah, I believe in open dialogue. I try not to go into executive session if at all possible. And I know that the staff has recommended a another meeting on Friday and I have very strong concerns about where this is at right now and whether or not this can all be done for Saturday, especially the footing and grade and cushion for these horses. You know, that's kind of a concern for me as well as being able to ban these horses off if something happened. On the other hand, I've got heartburn over keeping these jockeys and trainers and everybody waiting until the day before a race. And I concur with the concerns about medication and Lasix applications and the cost involved with that. You know, where I'm leading and the other Commissioners can weigh in is I'm going to make a motion that we give a 45-day conditional permit to Turf Paradise pending resolution of these concerns and continued reports to the Agency and it to include a trailer for these jockeys if there are any further water breaks, pipes, leaks, inability for them to safely use the jockey's quarters. That's my thoughts. Would I have a second?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Zucker. I second that.
Anna?
Thank you. I have a motion by Madam French Contreras and a second by Commissioner Zucker. I will call the row. Madam Chair, French Contreras?
Yes.
Olson is absent. Commissioner Coolidge?
No.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
With a total of two yeses and one no. Thank you. That motion passes with conditional approval.
Any other thoughts?
If I may, Madam Chairman, this is Jean Galvin, your Independent Advisor. As far as what happens next, so the permit holder and the Commission are clear. Would we be scheduling a follow-up inspection, another special meeting or hold it at your regular Commission meeting? A report to the Commission, updates from the permit holder?
I'm looking at the calendar. Because I'm afraid 30 days isn't enough. Our next meeting is the 14th of November. How far out is that from now? That's one, two.
Little more, yeah, than two weeks.
Little more. So we could get an update at our regular meeting, correct? And then the next meeting would be the 12th of December. So I think we'd need a meeting in between, correct?
December 12th exceeds the, you know, your 45-day time.
Right. So we'd have to find a meeting in between November and December. And that would include, of course, continued reporting by Turf Paradise regarding the status of their repairs and inspections by Division staff.
Would that also include an immediate report within 24 hours if there are any incidents or concerns during a meet? Or training?
Yes, ma'am. Do you want me to amend my motion? That's since it passed or do a new motion to include that?
I think that it could be the consensus of the Commission to direct the permit holder to provide to the Commission and its Executive Director within 24 hours of if there's any, and I don't know how to wear this and I apologize, but if during any meet or during training an incident occurs that causes, you know, injury to a horse or one of the jockeys.
Yes, ma'am. I agree with that. So does that need to be a second motion?
I'm not, if that's the consensus of the Commission and if Mr. Sims is still on the line and Mr. Francia, if they understand that direction.
No, this is Jerry Sims. I'm not sure I follow.
What the Commission is asking Mr. Sims is that you, as the permit holder, notify the Commission within 24 hours of any injury or events that causes harm to either a horse or an athlete during a meet or during training. During this time, you're conditionally approved.
Yes, we can comply with that.
Thank you.
Do I have any other comments or suggestions, open discussion from fellow Commission members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zucker, I also would like to be in sync with the other agencies. I understand that the Health Department has given a limited approval. But we need to be notified should they not give final approval. And the Fire Department, for the safety of those attending the events, we want to make sure that the grandstands in all facilities are up to Fire Department standards and code. So that should be a party to this condition that we're providing.
I think that would fall within the 45 days. They would have, if they didn't pass, they'd have to keep doing whatever they need to do to make that happen within that 45 days. And if they can't, then that's something we would address at that time. Because they have to make it right. Right?
Yes. It really is not the Commission, the Department, these other agencies. It all really comes down to the permittee. They know what needs to be done. It's up to them to comply in a timely manner. It's been a resmo time since Mr. Duncan has notified them back in June of this list. I know, and reviewed the list extensively, it is a long list. It's an aging track, but it needs some desperate attention immediately. I know and I see, I was at the track touring, I saw that there were the efforts being made. But is it in a timely basis?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nolan, you've raised your hand. I'm going to give you one minute if you want to continue public comment.
Thank you, Chair. I've brought this up more than once and I believe it's for all stakeholders that the November meeting is scheduled on a race day. And we have a lot of participation in this meeting, but I brought this up a year ago when you scheduled these meetings, that these need to be on non-race days. This is a crucial time in racing in our state. Racing participants need to be available. Race days, entry days. There's no fault of ours that you've scheduled these when they scheduled racing. The only days available are Fridays. I asked a couple of months ago, I've asked several months ago, please consider these people that want to participate, schedule accordingly. Please try to move the November 14th to the November 15th date. I know it's a burden on you, but it's a burden on us also. And we are the part, we, the licensees, the racing participants have that right to be heard. And I thank you for that time.
Yes, sir. And let me remind you, that was something that I asked the staff at the last meeting and they are working on that. If we can make that change, we will. We're just right now looking at the calendar to get general ideas on the 45 days, but the idea of moving these meetings to Fridays has not been abandoned. So bear with us while we address that. Anybody else have comment? Commissioner? Let, Mr. Coolidge, Commissioner Coolidge, I know that you do not agree with the 45 days. I respect that. Is there any public comment you want to make in public regarding your thoughts on that?
On my no vote?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Turf Paradise has openly stated that they're going to have all items done and feel capable of doing so by Friday. And I was willing to give them that window so that we could revisit that conversation on Friday, hoping to let them move forward.
Okay, good and fair discussion. I appreciate your thoughts very much. With that, do I have any other comment? Or thoughts on the? Or thoughts on this? Um, staff will work on a forty-five day meeting. Um, in the meantime, there's a twenty-four hour window to notify the Racing Commission staff if there's any injury to horse rider, uh, athlete. Um, there will be a trailer available to jockeys should there be any major health concerns, broken pipes with the, the jockey's area. Um, and of course, we will endeavor to try and move these meetings to Fridays if at all possible, cause I agree, it's important that we get all the participants involved in this and try and bring everything up to speed and have a very, very successful race season. Um, if there's not any other thoughts, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, you can second as well.
I'm sorry?
I said, you could second as well.
Okay, thank you. I will second that. Um, Anna?
Thank you with the motion by Commissioner Coolidge and a second by Madam Chair French Contreras. I will call the row. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yes. Alson is absent. Commissioner Coolidge?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, the time is three thirty-one PM and this meeting has adjourned. If everyone can please exit the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.